Hello everyone, welcome to the April ninth, two thousand and twenty five city council meeting. We're going to begin with the invocation from Councilman Curtis, followed by the pledge. If you please stand.
Please pray with me. Lord, we thank you for a beautiful spring day in East Texas. We're thankful for the privilege to gather here as council and ask for your wisdom in making the decisions that will lead to the continued improvement of our city. We ask for your blessings on all the citizens of Tyler, and we ask for good health and protection for our mayor, our county judge, our governor, and our president. We ask all these things in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from February the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Keller. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. R one. Jimmy. Chief.
Morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
Come to you today seeking a resolution for a continued participation in East Texas, Auto Theft Task Force. We've participated in this task force. It's a grant-funded position through them for the last thirty-one years. It continues to be a valuable resource for us to partner with the sheriff's offices, not only in Smith County, but the surrounding counties, and continue to see if those numbers go down. I think last year we reported one hundred and sixty-three motor vehicle thefts. The year before that is in the two-hundred range. So, we've investigated cases that go all the way down to the border, Shreveport, to the Metroplex, as these organized rings have stolen cars from dealerships and other locations, and that partnership allows us to have additional resources. So, we request the city council to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the Tyler Police Department to participate with other law enforcement agencies in the submission of a use of a grant request for the Texas Motor Vehicle Criminal Crime Prevention Authority for the thirty-first year of funding to participate in the East Texas Auto Theft Task Force, authorizing certain city matching funds and in-kind shares, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a working agreement regarding the same.
Any questions for the chief?
I got one. Is the police department finally going to beat the fire department and softball this year?
You know, you know, I would say yeah, but there's fire guys in here and I don't want to... I mean, we're going to stand proud and do our best, though. I would say that.
Any other questions for the chief?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, R one.
Second.
Got a motion by McCellar, or by Curtis, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. O one.
Hey, I'm still here. This is an adjustment to the Civil Service Classification Plan. You know, over the last few years, we've added the two homeless outreach officers that are working the downtown area, but also the surrounding areas, as we focus on, on not outreach, but in the last, in October, you authorized the two additional DBAC officers that are now assigned to the downtown area through the TERS funding, but also the COPS grant. This is going to allow us to make this adjustment of changing, reclassifying an officer to a SARS position, and all those people will now answer to that supervisor there. And then as soon as we get this taken care of, then Chuck Boyce will be that identified sergeant taking that over. But he's also the person that teaches crisis intervention. He's also our critical incident stress management person to start helping move forward with that, but also as we look forward in the future for adding male health officers to that position also. The only change, that's the only change we're making for the police department, for the fire department. There's also a minor adjustment. I think in October, you authorize the temporary adjustment of one additional position. This brings it back down to the normal authorized positions based on their academy. So, we request that the city council consider adoption of, or amending the Tyler City Chapter Three Civil Service Classification Plan by amending the Civil Service Classification Plan and the number of authorized civil service positions for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five.
Any questions for the chief?
Move to approve, O one.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, chief. Kate.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Morning.
The item before you is Agenda Item O two. These are amendments to City Code, Chapter Nineteen, Article Six, Lake Tyler and Lake Tyler East. So, as you know, the city of Tyler owns and operates Lake Tyler and Lake Tyler East. Lake Tyler is the raw water source for the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant, which supplies a portion of the city with drinking water. Lake Tyler has four hundred and fifty-two leasehold properties, and Lake Tyler East has five hundred and sixty-two privately-owned waterfront properties. The last significant revisions that were completed to the Lake Tyler ordinances occurred in two thousand and eleven, after the last master plan. So, Chapter, City Code, Chapter Nineteen, Article Six includes provisions related to environmental regulations, to protect the lakes as critical water sources, construction and leasing of lake lots, plumbing, navigation, sanitation, and water activities for public health and safety. The most notable update in Chapter Nineteen is related to the setback and variance policy. So, generally plumbing has not been permitted within the hundred-foot setback from the three-seventy-eight MSL elevation, aligning with state regulations to protect public drinking water per Title Thirty of the Texas Administrative Code. If you look at the illustration, that is a survey. So, the rectangular portion is the lot. The green line shown at the bottom is the three-seventy-eight-foot contour, which is closest to the water or to the shoreline. A hundred linear feet back from that is the hundred-foot setback. And so, within that area, as well as out on the water, typically, we would not allow plumbing. However, per written state authorization in nineteen ninety-seven, certain variances were granted under stringent conditions, which stopped in August nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. So, since two thousand and twenty-two, no new variances have been granted, which is in line with state law. So, with this, there will be no new plumbing permitted in boat houses at Lake Tyler and Lake Tyler East moving forward. Existing boat houses with plumbing, with variances and permits granted prior to two thousand and twenty-two will remain valid if they comply with the applicable code requirements. So, and these requirements have been in place since nineteen ninety-nine. So, each boat house is only allowed one commode, one bathroom lavatory, one shower and/or tub, one kitchen sink, one water heater, one ice maker. The wastewater collection tank and the system is to be designed by a professional engineer, and an annual inspection is to be completed by a licensed inspector. So, some other key...
Kate, get back up.
Yeah.
So, when you say one commode, one lavatory, and all that, some of those boat houses out there are fairly large?
Yes.
What happens if one has more than one?
They will be required to come into compliance, because that would have not been permitted, and they would have done that without the authorization of the Lake Tyler Authority. Yeah. So, that's, we're going to find that out when we go through our first inspection, which, for next steps. So, other key revisions to Chapter Nineteen include just updated definitions for clarification, boat house and pier construction, revised guidelines for finished floor elevations and accessory structures, updating requirements for boat house and pier construction. For sanitation and plumbing inspections, we detailed that the annual inspections of onsite sewer sewer systems and collection systems are required, both on the land and on the water. And then there are consequences to, for failing to comply with these required inspections, which are due annually, October first, with the renewal of leases, or the registration renewal for Lake Tyler East.
What are the consequences?
I don't want to mix it up, so I'm going to read from the ordinance. So, failure to submit that septic inspection by a licensed inspector on Lake Tyler, so the leasehold properties, will result in us withholding the renewal of the lease. They'll have sixty days to remedy any issues either identified in the report if they weren't compliant, or if they did not do the inspection. After sixty days, that will result in the city withholding renewal of the lease, and we reserve the right to begin the process of lease termination. On Lake Tyler East, because those properties are owned by the people that live on them, that will result in a five hundred dollar fine. And so, same kind of curing process, sixty days. And then failure to remedy that after sixty days will result in additional fines or liens, to the extent limited under state law. So, oh, forgot that one, which is important. So, other key revisions, the schedule of fees has been updated, and these costs were analyzed by city staff. We looked at and we reflected the actual cost of administering the lake regulations. Other amendments were completely enough changes, like I spoke about before, and provisions for boating, watercraft construction, and leasing of lake lots. I would, this has been a multiple-year process we've been going through, and so I would like to thank the Water Utilities Department, as well as the Legal Department, for their extensive review of these ordinances to make sure that they're in order. And I want to say a special thanks to Mark Kreisner for his valuable assistance throughout this process. So, my request is to the city council to consider adoption of an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter Nineteen, by updating provisions related to Lake Tyler and Lake Tyler East, by amending definitions, amending provisions related to boating and watercraft, amending provisions related to the construction and leasing of lake lots and structures thereon, amending provisions related to boat houses, piers, and accessory structures, improving environmental regulations regarding sanitation and plumbing in conformance with state regulations, amending provisions to clarify the city's authority over lake waters and city-owned lands adjacent there to, revising fees to reflect actual costs associated with administration, and making other cleanup changes.
Any questions for Kate?
Kate, I have one question. Typically, the answer is yes, but I just want to make sure. The variances that were allowed prior to two thousand and twenty-two, if a lot owner sells their house or property, will those variances continue with a new owner once these changes are in effect?
As long as they are in conformance, yes, they will.
I've got one. On the inspection that you were talking about, Kate, is that, is that only on plumbing within that hundred foot, hundred feet from the...
No, it's, so each lot, because there's no sewer service out there, each lot has its own OSSF.
So, it's all the septic?
So, it's all the septic. You know, really, we want to make sure that if there is plumbing out over the water, that that definitely passes compliance, but that septic system that's on the lot is just as much of a worry, to make sure they're in compliance.
And the boat houses that may have more than one bathroom, let's say, those, those would not have been approved in the past?
Correct.
Okay.
They wouldn't, we would never have permitted that, yeah.
Kate, you said a licensed inspector. So, this isn't just a plumber going out. It's not a city employee. This will be a third-party?
Yes.
Licensed inspector, and who's paying that fee for that licensed inspector?
So, that's a good question. This initial round, we are going, the Tyler Water Utilities is going to pay for it, so that we have a baseline to ensure that we get it inspected, just to make sure everything's above board. After, after this first year, where we kind of have the baseline of what we have out there, then we, then they will take that cost on themselves. Each leaseholder or property owner will have that licensed inspector hire them, and then they are to kind of turn in their inspection afterward, or while, not while afterward, or with the lease renewal.
So, this will be an annual requirement?
This is annual, yes.
Annual inspection, and when they come to renew their lease, and do the leases renew at different times during the year, or is it first of the year?
The leases renew, renew the first of the fiscal year, yes.
So, then there'll be a kind of a crunch there where they're getting all these inspections done?
Mm-hmm.
So, going back to the boat houses with more than one restroom, where they have to get some type of special permit, because they, what do they do if they have the two restrooms? They can't just say, "I want..."
Well, because they were installed without authorization, they would need to not use that restroom anymore. They need to cut and plug. We never gave them authorization for it to begin with, so.
I'm still, I'm still struggling with the same thing she's talking about.
Yeah, because you said that it's been present since nineteen ninety-nine. Is that what you said?
Yes. So, we, in nineteen ninety-seven, we got state authorization in a letter that gave a very, like, it was a very specific instructions and a very specific exception to allow for this. However, we researched, and we can't find any other lakes in the state of Texas that have allowed that. So, we want to come in compliance with state law, which basically says, within seventy-five feet of, of a water source that is used for public drinking water, which is our primary concern here, because this water is the water that the citizens of Tyler drink, and we want to ensure that environmentally, everything is in compliance. So, I understand the struggle or the issue, but again, we would, the variance allowed specifically one bathroom, one laboratory, one shower tub, like, there was never an allowance in our ordinances, even in the variance, that would have allowed them to install more than one bathroom.
And we weren't doing inspections prior, just starting now?
We did, we did inspections from probably ninety-nine through two thousand and eight or so, and then with the last master plan, that, that was turned over. So, the inspections fell off.
And so, Kate, they were given all of these instructions beforehand, correct?
Yes, it was, it was in city code.
So, they knew better?
Yes.
Yes.
But like on Lake Palestine, there are no boat houses with plumbing.
No.
And, and I think that's, something, something happened back in nineteen ninety-seven, when the letter was written, where you cannot have plumbing over the water. And somehow or other, something occurred, and maybe one person had one, then another person had one, and it got just a little bit out of control. And, and it wasn't really properly, properly placed. And when it, once it got out of control, I think this is where we're coming back, whoa, 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 it's time to reel it in.
Right, yeah.
Fishing term. Talking about lakes.
Right.
Exactly.
Well, the difference of fishing off of a dock in Lake Palestine versus off of Lake Tyler is sometimes, you know, you don't go up the hill for the bathroom in Lake Palestine. At least, that's what I understand. So, but my que...
My goodness.
Point of order?
Point of order.
Do we need to offer a motion at this point?
I, just one more question. I would like for us to consider maybe some way of divvying it up quarterly, so that you, you know, quarter, quarterly a certain part of the lake, certain for those inspections, because I think what we'd find is if everybody's got their, get their inspections done, you said it would be fiscal, so like, August, or by August, you're going to have this rush or crunch. So, I'd just ask that we consider maybe having quarterly, everybody does it annually, but you just divvy it up, so there's certain quarters of the year that parts of the lake are inspected. It might make it easier long-term that way.
Yeah, we can look into that, for sure.
We can get it inspected at any time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anytime during that year.
Right, right.
Give them time to plug those ports.
All right. Any other questions for Kate?
I have a motion to accept O two.
Second.
Got a motion by McCellar, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Cameron, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Cameron Williams, Traffic Engineer for City Tyler. So, here to talk to you about the work authorization for our Year Five Traffic Signal Timing Improvements. But before I do that, I do want to give you an update on our Year Four Traffic Signal Timing Results. You see those on the screen, and you see some significant reductions in delays, stops, and increases on speeds, and these were for the Gentry, Parkway, Glenwood Boulevard, and North Palace corridors. So, these were definitely significant improvements for these corridors. But I want to emphasize that the signal timing was a culmination of multiple improvements. So, you've seen that through our master plan of our central system, our communications, detection upgrades at our intersections that help make these corridors work better. On Gentry specifically, within the past few years, we've reconstructed four of those nine intersections. And so, again, upgrading the equipment, the infrastructure, to make the signal timing successful. And so, just want to emphasize that investment and say thank you, as we continue to move forward with these improvements. We also want to point out on Glenwood and Palace, we also have future detection upgrades that will help enhance those signal timings even more, that are planned in the near future through some additional funding that we have with TechDOT and federal government. Here's just an overview of what we've been moving through as far as in re-timing traffic signals, what we've done since the pilot study with the master plan, and through our different years. We are entering Year Five, and so after Year Five, we'll re-time close to sixty-five percent of our traffic signals. And now, we will never get to a hundred percent, just because a lot of our intersections are what we call free. They're not part of a coordinated system, so we won't necessarily go through and re-time those intersections like we do on these big corridors with lots of traffic. You see in Year Five, got it broken up, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. We are to a point where we're starting to go back and re-look at intersections that were timed in Year Zero and Year One, because the guidance is every three to five years, we need to be looking at these corridors, or maybe even sooner. And so, we're to a point where we can start going back and reevaluating and tweaking things a little bit better on these corridors. Here you see just some estimates on delay savings and also cost savings. Is at the end of the day, getting people through those intersections more efficiently, less stops, that's what they want to see, right? But we also try to quantify that. What are these improvements? And when you look at from a cost-benefit ratio, what we spend on signal timing versus the benefit, it's significant, and the savings that people actually get, even though it doesn't go in your pocketbook, but getting to work a little bit faster, getting somewhere quicker, and not being delayed has, has improvements. I do want to take a moment to say, you know, signal timing is not a silver bullet. It can't solve every problem. There's going to be times during the day where the capacity of the roadway is constrained. We just can't get any more through there. So, that's what leads us into transportation planning piece. You know about our South Tyler Mobility. How do we look at other roadways? And also, other modes. That's, NPO is working on the transit study right now. So, try to work all these things together to improve mobility throughout the city. So, this is a big part of it, but it's not the whole picture. So, but you can see we continue to make improvements. What does Year Five look like? So, it is re-timing twelve intersections on the East Loop that we have not touched before. We will be revisiting fourteen intersections that are on South Broadway that we re-timed in previous years. And so, the effort there is not as big as a total re-timing. We're doing traffic counts, optimization. It will cost us one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars for this work, in order to improve the traffic flow and reliability. So, here's a map. That green on the East Loop is what are the twelve intersections that we have not re-timed previously, that we'll be evaluating this time. And then, the blue corridor, South Broadway, really from Market Square up through what we call Rose Plaza, but the Wagner, Old Wagner Dealership there is what we'll be revisiting that we have timed in previous years. And as an example, on that corridor, you can think of things that have happened since we re-timed with Tyler ISD, the Tyler Legacy changing up there, where they come out on Shiloh. You've got Chick-fil-A has moved locations on Broadway. You've also at the Wagner Dealership, the Seven Brew, and the Lanes Chicken. So, we've made some tweaks, but this gives us an opportunity to get the traffic counts and kind of fine-tune those. So, with that, it is requested that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a Work Order Number Four with Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the Intelligent Transportation System Master Plan, Year Five Traffic Signal Timing Improvements.
So, when you have a power outage and the lights are totally out, and then electricity comes back on, or you get a generator on there, do the lights go back to the correct timing, or does that have to be re-timed?
No, it goes back. So, there's, within those controllers, it has the database, the timing that we use on a day of the week, or day, time of the day. So, it will. Now, there are definitely some transition there of getting back in step, but they do revert back to those, those signal timings that we have programmed.
You know, while back, you had mentioned that, that because of all the traffic timing, the wait time on Broadway was reduced by thirty-two percent. Will you have numbers like that kind of throughout Tyler of the reduction in wait time? I mean, the graphs are pretty and they're great.
Right.
But people knowing the, what, the reduction in wait time means something. Will those numbers be available?
Sure. So, what you saw was like what we did with Gentry, that was very significant, like a forty-two percent reduction. I would anticipate when we go back to South Broadway, when we re-timed it previously, we saw what, around a thirty-something percent reduction. I wouldn't anticipate the results to be that good this next time around, just because we have already done a big step forward. Maybe we see a little bit of adjustment. But also, one thing that we'll be looking at this time is we have the data from four or five years ago on the delays, and we can compare, like, how much difference are we from before we did the signal timing, after we did the signal timing, how much have we decreased and improved? So, we'll definitely summarize those results and give us better baselines of our improvements.
You know, what I'm struck by is how much benefit we get out of this program for that amount of money. And maybe I've been sitting up here too long, that one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars isn't a lot of money, but by city standards, it's not. So, that's, you know, it's a, it's a great program.
Absolutely. So, when you do like a benefit-to-cost calculation, I mean, that's a, from the different years, as the low end at twenty-eight to up to seventy, benefit-to-cost ratio with these type of kind of estimates on what we're getting from this system.
Cameron, you mentioned future projects with Palace and Greenwood, and future grants that you may get. Are y'all planning ahead and looking a couple of years down the road, where y'all are going to time that with the traffic displacement, with the downtown improvement projects that are about to take place, with either the narrowing of Broadway and then traffic getting pushed to Beckham and Palace? Will that coincide at the same time?
Sure. So, I, I think that's an important piece to come up with, us already re-timing Palace and Glenwood, is previous to this, they did not have any coordination north-south. And so, by providing that coordination, we're able to move traffic, you know, better north and south, so that as people try to avoid downtown, whenever all the constructions happen and shift, then they'll be able to take on that capacity. So, I think there's already a lot of capacity there, so this is already getting us the majority of the way. But as we see those traffic patterns change, and definitely come back and look at, you know, are there tweaks on different movements, left turns, that we need to give a little bit more time, because maybe that volume wasn't there before and it is now. So, those will definitely be things to evaluate.
All right. Any other questions for Cameron?
Move to approve, M one.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McCellar. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron.
M two. Jacob.
Good morning, Mayor, and Council.
Morning.
So, my name is Jacob Yanko of Tyler Water Utilities, and I'm going to be presenting Agenda Item M two for the South Glenwood Ground Storage Tank Demolition Construction Ward, bid number twenty-five oh fifteen. So, a little bit of background about this site. The, the South Glenwood Ground Storage Tank is located on South Glenwood, where the road actually splits and goes around the tank. It was originally constructed in the forties, and it served as a storage facility and distribution point for well two, and it was in service for over fifty years. In two thousand and twenty-two, we actually received a violation from the TCQ regarding the exterior, the condition, long after the tank had since been out of service. So, we were faced with a decision to make refurbish and rehab the tank, or move towards the demolition. And so, staff decided to move towards the demolition of this facility. So, the project scope, like I said, we're going to be demolishing the, the tank structure itself, as well as the foundation. We'll be removing the fence and the pump building, the pump house building that's on the property. Be cut and plugging the existing lines. There is some overhead electric and communication coordination that has already occurred. And then, there's a significant amount of traffic control for South Glenwood during, during the demo of this size. So, sealed bids were received and read aloud on March eleventh. We received two bidders for this project. The apparent low bidder actually provided an incomplete bid. There was three items that they did not provide pricing on. So, fortunately for us, the second bidder was relatively close in cost. Hunter Demolition and Wreck Incorporation, we have received their approved contractor application. It has been reviewed. It has been vetted. We've spoke with a few municipalities and vendors that have worked with Hunter, and they have been deemed qualified and competent to perform this scope of work in the allowed schedule. So, estimated construction completion... So, estimated construction completion is by the end of the summer, August 2025. So I would like to request that the City Council consider authorizing the City Manager to execute a capital improvements contract in the amount of $276,684 with Hunter Demolition and Wrecking Corporation for the South Glenwood Ground Storage Tank Demolition and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Jacob?
Uh, Jacob, is today your birthday?
Yes, it is.
No.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
And I want to say, you should say.
Yeah, you, you have anything else?
No, I just have.
Did Kate tell you?
I don't know.
I would say you're making a lot of people happy with this, because I've gotten many comments over the last few years about, when are we going to do something about that? Once it's removed, is it going to be re-graded and sodded?
Uh, yes, sir, so we'll re-grade the area and re-vegetate everything, yep.
And the actual wells themselves, I mean, they, they don't function now, but is there still water down there? Is that why we got away from them? They're running out of water?
To my understanding, the, the groundwater table is, is still there, right? We don't use them anymore because we're solely surface water.
Right.
That well two specifically is going to be capped here in the next few months. I spoke with Nikki about that this morning, and here, the schedule for that is in the next few months, that well will be capped, so.
Great.
Would you like to make a motion, Mayor?
Yes, I would, since I've been talking about this for six years. I'd like to offer a motion that we accept everything that you presented to us.
Second.
Second, okay. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you, Jacob.
Happy birthday.
And happy birthday.
Chief?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
I have M3 this morning. It's a request that the City Council consider approving the purchase of 14.6 acre tract of property located at 3150 Robertson Road. It says here for one, one hun, $1,275,000, but what was approved yesterday at half cent was not to exceed $1,375,000, so it would take in the closing costs or any other costs that may go along with the purch, purchase. Authorizing the City Manager to execute of all documents necessary to accomplish the same. So what we have is, you guys are familiar with our current training facility, and it's in the entertainment district. It's been sought after by the ISD for quite a while, so we have a couple of deals on the table that we're working with, but this would give us an opportunity to move our training center. And our training center was basically built by firefighters, it wasn't all engineered with all the safety factors that go along with training centers. So this would give us an opportunity to have an engineered training facility for the city. Here's the location of where we currently are, and then the location of, of the purchase of this property. You see, it's, it's a sandwich between the CTC there and of course TJC West is, is fairly close as well. We currently allow TJC West through contract to use our training facility, so that would work out really well for them to be fairly close. This is in an industrial district as well. This is a concept drawing that we had made back in 2018 when we were looking at the Noble Young property, that didn't work out for us, but we did have a concept plan drawn at that time, and this is what it looked like. Be very similar to this, but we will have an architect draw it up for, for this property. It's going to allow us to do more realistic firefighter training. Everything would be to our physical building test, our training academy, our recruit academy, all rescue operations would be there as well, and of course, collaboration with both TJC. And we do plan on, hoping that we can have something in place with the ISD as well. They do have a firefighter program there at the CTC, as well as an EMT program at the CTC. Again, it will enhance firefighter skill and safety, improve emergency response, and, is cost effective also for us as well. The project could be funded by half cent sales tax. We also have the community support from both TISD and TJC for this project, and we hope to go into the design phase in somewhere between 2026 and 2027, and then construction 2027 and 2028. So the request, it's recommended that the City Council approve the purchase of 14.6 acre tract of property for $1,275,000, according to the half cent sales act, not to exceed $1,375,000, to construct a fire training facility and ratify and authorize the City Manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish the same.
Any questions for the chief?
Move to approve.
I, I have just one question. You, you've mentioned that other departments, other, other surrounding cities that may be able to train with you as well?
Yeah, anyone we have a mutual aid agreement with, in that mutual aid agreement, we, we do have ways that we can train with them on the parks, right? But with the city's investment, you know, we would want that to be some type of mutual funding as well from, from other places.
Exactly.
Right, we got a motion by Haney?
Second.
Second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Chief. We're down to the consent agenda, do we need to pull anything or approve as presented?
Prove the cons-
Go ahead.
Prove the consent agenda as written.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Managers report.
Mayor and Council, kind of following up with some other actions from Chief Cobble and the Tyler Fire Department, they've launched a new program to install automated external defibrillators in city-owned buildings. This program will enhance public safety by providing these life-saving devices in areas where they may be deployed in the case of cardiac-related emergencies. As part of the program, 11 AEDs have been installed since last November, and will continue to install them as the program continues. Many of the AEDs are equipped with Wi-Fi capability, allowing the fire department remotely monitor battery levels and maintenance needs to ensure the units remain ready for use. The Tyler Fire Department wants to help make AEDs more accessible and ensure that they are always in working condition. We encourage everyone to become familiar with AED use and CPR training, because every second counts during a cardiac emergency. Now, earlier we talked about traffic, and again, traffic operations continues to improve here in Tyler in other ways as well. Well-maintained traffic signs not only enhance the beauty of our city, but are vital for ensuring safer and more efficient roads for residents and visitors. We have implemented a new strategy to improve the productivity of our staff in maintaining the over 100,000 traffic signs throughout the city of Tyler. We repurposed the Street Department's Street Crew Sweeper Zone Map, which divided the city into 87 zones for systematic street cleaning. The Sign Shop has adopted this zone map to effectively maintain the traffic signs across the city. Each of our three staff members is assigned to a specific zone where they drive, identify, and address the signs that require attention. Once all issues in a zone are resolved, they proceed to the next zone. Their systematic approach ensures we achieve our goal of being the leader in sign maintenance among all municipalities. Couple of things coming up, or a big one coming up is our, on Saturday, we have the Keep Tyler Beautiful Annual Don't Mess With Texas Trash Off and Keep America Beautiful Great American Cleanup. And so this is a big event that our Keep Tyler Beautiful Department puts together and hosted by our Parks Department as well. And so it will be, this year, we'll meet at Southside Park for, to kick things off and go to different locations to clean up and come back. And then, there's also the baseball game that has been referenced at several council meetings as well between police and fire with, I think you two is the umpires?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
They don't sound so happy.
We'll be very fair.
Yeah.
Okay. And then finally with, as we just experienced this, well, past weekend, and we'll continue in the weekends ahead, I'm sure, you know, emergencies happen as far as with the weather, and they pop up, you know, just out of thin air. And so with that, we always want to make sure that people are signed up to our rave alerts. That is one of the quickest ways to be able to get information about our tornado warnings or as far as flood, flash flooding, so people can be safe and know what to do next in their homes or businesses.
All right, any questions or comments to the City Manager? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Send move.
All right, we are adjourned.